Good. Smithville Board of Alderman Meetings now called to order. Please stand and join me for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Next item on the agenda is proclamation for Parks Month. Matt, are you here for this? And then you're gonna run away? All right, well, July is Parks and Rec Month. Matt and his team have a ton of things planned for us. So please get out and enjoy the parks and the fun recreation activities, so. Next item on the agenda is consent agenda.
Alderman Yulidol.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you. Do you have a second?
Second.
Alderman Mack, in seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the City Administrator's Report. Ms. Wagner?
There are a number of items included in this week's report. I will call your attention to a few of them. One, we are working, Stephen and his staff, to continually improve the information that we provide to the public, including the utility bills that we provide. And they have worked with our billing company to try to come up with a little bit more informative utility bill. We will be rolling that information out in the next utility bill. We will have information online and included in various social media posts to call attention to those changes. This is really trying to just make the bill a little more easy to read, denoting usage charges versus fixed charges, due dates, and that type of information. So Stephen and his staff have taken some time and put that together. A number of other items outlining, outlined in here, including the Parks and Recreation Agency Performance Review that is conducted annually by the National Parks and Recreation Association, and a copy of that document is included in the City Administrator's Report. Some public works updates. And then there are a couple of items related to utility billing, water and wastewater leak adjustments. We did include some information in here if the board has questions. Stephen can, can address some of those, but we can also.
Can you hear that, or is it too loud?
It's good. It's good. We can hear you.
We also have some information, excuse me, the wastewater adjustment and billing leak adjustments. We, if the board wishes to proceed on this, we can bring this forward for review in a future work session.
Bring, bring what forward, Cynthia? I'm sorry.
As outlined in the last couple of pages of the document was information about water and wastewater leak adjustments and the difference between commercial and residential accounts. Stephen, do you want to take them through? I always, there are a couple of issues outlined in here, and I always get them confused and overlapped. Yes.
So there's two issues. Hopefully, mic's on everything. Okay. So there's two issues that were outlined in the report. One of them was the wastewater credit. And that really had to do with the administrative approval and whether you would like those to follow the formal approval process that we would do with the water leak adjustment. And so if you, if you would like, we can talk about that in a work session. And it's really just for wastewater credit adjustments related to commercial businesses, since they are not eligible for water leak adjustments. Right now, Cynthia has the administrative approval to just approve those, the authority. It's up to you whether you'd like that to also run with the authority that the board has, that they're the ones to also approve a wastewater adjustment like they do a leak, a water leak adjustment.
Let's go ahead and talk about it during our work session, just to make sure everybody's on the same page. Everybody's got the same information.
That's exactly what we wanted to, to make you all aware of that and to bring that forward. So, yeah. And just a couple of reminders, July 4th meeting is canceled for the holiday, and City Hall will be closed the 3rd and the 4th. And then the August 1st meeting has been canceled. And then we do have on the calendar a special meeting on Monday, August 28th. That's to take action on ballot language following the state law allowing us to take a public safety sales tax to the voters on the ballot. Mayor, that is all I have at this time.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is number six. Alderman Yulidol.
Motion to approve bill number 2995-23, fiscal year 2023, budget amendment number five, second reading.
Thank you. Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please call roll.
Alderman Shipley.
Aye.
Alderman Atkins.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Yulidol.
Aye.
Alderman Russell.
Aye.
Alderman Hartman.
Aye.
Six, zero.
Motion carries. Ms. Wagner, please read the bill.
An ordinance amending the fiscal year 23 operating budget to add $1,127,902 to the expenditure budget.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is number seven. Alderman Yulidol.
Motion to approve bill number 2996-23, 110 Smithfield TIF Plan and Redevelopment Agreement, first reading.
Thank you. Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you. First, we'll go with public comment. Deborah Garrison. This is a reminder, you have three minutes. Thank you. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi. Can you hear me?
Yep, we're good.
Okay, I'm Deborah Garrison. I live at 161 East First Street, apartment 168 here in Smithville. And I'm not even sure what I'm gonna ask you about now, because I, I've had so many more questions added to this meeting. I'm, in the first place, what I was going to ask you was where are these people supposed to park to come to all these events? If you give away our parking lot to the man that's buying the hospital, I can't remember names anymore, I'm sorry. But where are all these people supposed to park? We had a great event this last Saturday, but they were parked all the way down to where I live, because there was no parking as it was. You take that parking away, then where are they supposed to park? And I want to know why. Nobody ever listens. We ask you people not to put those sidewalks where they were sticking out into the street. So what do you do? Oh, we already voted on it. We did anyway. I've heard nothing but bad, and people don't even come up here, because they don't have to go around those sidewalks. And don't think I don't know what I'm talking about, because I do drive, even though I'm in a wheelchair, I drive. And I don't know what y'all think you're doing, except you're trying to turn this into a little Kansas City. And I moved out of Kansas City to get away from this kind of crap. And that's all I've got to say.
Thank you. Carol Dawkins.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Carol Dawkins. I'm a resident of Smithville. We have been working on getting a change on the TIF. So we need to have people listen to us. We have 71 more signatures additional to the 70 that we have already given. The council is supposed to do what is needed for the ones that serve. Please help us with this and go back to the TIF and get something rather than nothing for 23 years. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Ally McLean.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Ally McLean. I live at 1004 Cone Flower, right here in Smithville. My concerns are with the TIFs. Since 2012, the Census Bureau has studied TIFs and their effects, and it's not good at all anywhere in the country. 65% of local funding comes from property taxes. Greatest share of school funding comes from that. Long-term property tax abatements in the name of economic development hurt schools, and that's all around the country. TIFs divert huge sums of money for decades. Not good for sound school business climate. First thing people ask anytime that they move anywhere, including Smithville, is so, are the schools good when moving to any new location? We're no different. People ask that. Cops and teachers are hard to retain. You lost two, I'm sorry, you lost one two weeks ago. So much for retention here in Smithville. Substitute teachers are still making the same as they did decades ago. So don't tell me it's not affecting little Smithville. My daughter went to public school. I believe in them. Have you given up on Smithville Public Schools? Because it sure seems like it. This is not my first rodeo. I come from Chicago. TIFs are a mess there, too. TIFs everywhere divert public funds to development projects. Teachers strike to get more resources for kids. Schools sue cities to get monies denied because of TIFs. TIFs, people say they're tools to funnel property tax to blighted area. False. It's going to high development in Smithville. That's where it's going. Price chopper, at least everyone uses apartment building. Fewer, fewer actually going to use that. TIFs are nothing more than corporate slush funds. You know it, and Smithville knows it. Progressive city councils see it as potential growth, but at what cost? You say TIF areas grow faster? That's what you tell people. Actually, they slow down. Look at the numbers. It's all around the country. Let's talk about the future. You're saying this property value is going to be $4 million for this apartment building. In 10 years, it'll probably be valued at 15 million. Schools will get property tax monies for just that $4 million. You want to know why? Because they do this all around the country, including where I come from. Tell the people the truth. A 23-years TIF is an entire generation. When the TIF is over, the owner of the property is going to ask for an assessment. Guess what? He's going to get it. Why? Well, because the property is 23-years-old. So it's going to go to the assessor when he asks for one. The property is now older, so basically it's valued at less money. It depreciates in value, less money again for the schools. So don't tell me they're going to be getting more money. They're going to be getting 4 million, not 15 million. Ironic, isn't it? Not funny for the schools. Our schools, our citizens, our entire town suffers. Nice job, you all. Let's put the people before the money. Thank you.
Scott Aggerty.
Scott Aggerty, 18165 South Ridge Road. Smithville, Missouri. I'll be brief, as I've already made my opinions on this subject, well-known, voting public forum, as well as an email to you all. As a note, an email that I did write has pointed out that some of the numbers were incorrect. And I assure you, any error that was on there was due to the fact that I was using the document that was dated January of 2023, so. In my plea tonight, I simply point out that this property intentions taxes and financing for two reasons. One, to remove a blight, a public problem. And two, to finance in part a private investment. The first is a great use of TIF. As a tool and as a community, we should get behind this and support this effort. For in it, we all win. However, the second must be called question. No matter how the narrative is spun, 110 Smithville is a private company looking to build an investment property. Taxpayers' dollars should not be used to secure investment opportunities for individuals or a group of individuals. In this scenario, only a few people win. In conclusion, please vote to offer funding for blight removal, but please stop there. Don't use my tax dollars to fund another person's investments. Thank you.
Jerry Stewart.
So I live in Woods Court since 2002, Lower Lane. Name is Jerry Stewart. I'm from Fort Worth, Texas. I lived in a suburb north of there. And I saw during my time living in North Fort Worth and Tarrant County, the growth that came of housing in districts that took over many dairy farms, wheat fields, horse farms, cattle farms. And so I saw growth come. It comes. It really does. And it brings lots of money, lots of revenue. Because when there's growth, people need to go somewhere. They want to go somewhere where they can have a quality of life. They're looking for that in Smithville. And so we need to be a community that's going to provide that quality of life to the people that are coming to Smithville. And they are coming. Do you think they need one little building torn down in order to come here? Will that make them want to come here more than anything else? Is because one little building with 85 apartments is here? When they're not coming here to look for, live in huge apartment complexes of 200 or 300 or 500 apartments, it's not that. It's 85 little apartments. Well, who's going to benefit from 85 little apartments? Is it going to be Smithville? Probably not. Is it going to be somebody that may like to use a few? And I don't know what kind of apartments they're going to be. Could they be luxury apartments? They could be used by the owner of those apartments in order to use it for his own purposes? Well, if that's the case, why would Smithville want to fund him in that case? And if those 85 people are going to be spending money in Smithville, well, how much money are they going to be spending to justify tax abatements for 23 years? And, you know, what it was saying here is that, and, and this is the foundation of, of our country. The freedom of our country is that we can trust and believe in the people that we elect to represent us. And we can believe and trust that they have the veracity and the, uh, the quality in their, their being, that they are going to do what's right for their community and the people that elected them and is paying their salary. You know, so that's trust. You break down trust, you have nothing. Everything evaporates. You cannot do business anywhere without trust. So when you destroy trust, you're destroying the foundation of the United States. So let's have trust and let's.
That's time, Mr. Stewart.
Where it's needed, not where it may be abused.
Alicia Neath.
Hello, my name's Alicia Neath. I live at 708 Quincy Boulevard. Thank you for your time. As you know, I've already sent an email in support of the TIF. Since that email, I've heard some citizens vocalizing that this project would be the death of the downtown and that rents would increase and cause businesses to close. I can't speak for other business owners, but I will say I've not heard anyone downtown voice this concern. Personally, I look forward to the new project, especially during the slow summer months. It really gives me something to look forward to, potential foot traffic and business coming from new tenants in this building, plus the new anchor tenants on the main floor. This area is the heart of our town, and it will continue to be that way even with a new building. So I think we need to figure out a way to make it work. Thank you.
Thank you. Deb.
I'm Deb Dotson, 2004 Northeast 196 Place, thank you, Smithville, Missouri. I really kind of struggled for a while to figure out what I wanted to say tonight. But I have some thoughts. Going back to the earlier TIF with price chopper. There was a lot of struggle with that. People were like, oh, my God, we don't want to give a TIF for price chopper. We don't need to do that. They're rich, blah, blah, blah. It's been on and on and on. Thankfully, the Board of Alderman at that time did pass that TIF. Now we have a nice big grocery store. It's great. We also have ancillary businesses that people attend. We've, it's got jobs for some people. There's more expansion to come there. It's, it worked out. So now we've got so a lot of new people coming in, things like that. So the TIF deal with price chopper isn't a big deal anymore. It just isn't a big deal. Schools are still here. The city's still here. It hasn't fallen apart, and it could be argued that our quality of life is much better. Quality of life is subjective. Young people, professionals, seniors, families. Not everyone is going to agree what their quality of life is going to be. That's pretty much human nature. As far as this TIF for this building, there could be any number of people living in that building. We don't know who for sure is going to move into that, who's going to want it, studios, top floor, whatever. It's going to bring people in and add to the vibrancy of our community. Diversity, inclusiveness. Smithville's always been known mostly as a kind and welcoming town. That's wide open to anybody who wants to come here. And now we've got so many places that are so far out of reach financially, it's just unbelievable. We need more housing. This project, this, this kind of project was discussed at length during the comprehensive plan, the strategic planning part. And this was the thing, this kind of project was exactly what people were talking about getting, a work, live, play, here and on the south end of town. I'm not going to tell you how to vote. I'm just going to say that a town grows and expands or dies. It's that simple. Thanks.
Thank you. Linda, any others? Thank you. Uh, applicant is also here. If the board has any questions for them, I'll now open it up to the board for questions and discussion.
I have a question, Mr. Mayor. Uh, we discussed earlier, and I know that Cynthia, we discussed this before, that, uh, and people, several people mentioned about returning this back to the TIF Commission for review. And I know that there's some, there's some issues there. And I had, I had also heard, and this is just hearing, a lot of people have been vocal about this, like you can see. We've all received a lot of letters, but that on the previous TIF, that the board was able to send it back to the commission. Are, can you elaborate on that?
That's not accurate. The last TIF was done, the TIF Commission meeting and the Board of Alderman meetings were done within a month, I believe, right, John? You were there. Yeah, it was not sent back.
Okay.
This board is elected to make decisions.
Okay.
The TIF Commission has discussed this, voted on it, sending it back is saying, we don't want to do our job. We're going to send it back to another body to do theirs.
Okay, so that's, that, I know that there was something about that it couldn't be done. Is that correct, or that there was, I know that.
It was substantial change.
I'm going to ask Megan Miller, our Economic Development Attorney with Gilmore and Bell, to address that question.
Just to clarify that. Thank you, Megan. Thank you, Cynthia.
So as Cynthia said, I'm Megan Miller. I'm the city's Economic Development Council. Yeah, so there's three ways a TIF goes back to the TIF Commission generally, and that's if you enlarge the boundaries, you're changing the general land uses of the project, and you're substantially changing the, the nature of the project. In this case, not, none of those things have happened. There's the nothing that has triggered either of those three things to force it to go back to the TIF Commission for them to, to reevaluate essentially, that would cause a new plan, right? That they would then have to evaluate. The board themselves, you all, are who make the decision. The TIF Commission is merely a recommending body that looks over the TIF plan, you know, makes sure that it's statutorily correct, and then recommends approval or disapproval to the board, and then you all make that decision. We just haven't triggered either of those three options.
Okay, thank you, Megan. I just, on, and I think that the TIF Commission, I think they did a good job. I think that the, the school board, it was very real vocal. A lot of people were involved. And we received, I think, all the Alderman mayor have received a lot of letters from concerned constituents. I, I still think that, I still don't think that the parking issue has been resolved. I know that that can go to the, the plane zoning commission at the next place. I don't feel that that's been resolved. And I don't, I don't feel that, we just, we just had a budget review for the five-year plan with, we went from a 40% reserve to a 25% reserve and projection of 0% reserve in 2028. And that's in a year, which, uh, funding that this, this alternative program with utility rate increase projected for the next five years, with three tax increases on the next three ballots. I don't feel that that's, I, I guess my thoughts are that the builder, the builder bought this, or the owner bought this property for a reason. And I don't know that, whatever the reason was, I don't think that taxpayer money should be, uh, sent to this developer to a system in, in development. I, I believe the development is good. I also think that the, the, I, I think that we talk about an eyesore. This is, I think everybody agrees that that is a terrible eyesore right there, right? But is a five-story building from 169 a magnet? Or is there another eyesore of people traveling through? My opinion is that it's an eyesore, but that's, that's my opinion. I don't think this is a good use of taxpayer funding. That's my opinion. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yes, I'm going to say, when you look at the TIF plan, we've heard a lot of people say they are in support of tearing down, demolishing the old hospital. When you look at the TIF plan and the funding that the developer's really asking for, in my opinion, is to tear down the building. That's all I'm going to say.
And Alderman Russell, your point, when you're talking about the projected cash flows, that's if we spend everything that we are talking about spending, which we won't do, because we do have a reserve policy. But also, right now, the cash that we, the, the property tax off of that building is insignificant. 30% of a new building would be a significant amount of money.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so, um, I, I just want to, I guess, for general discussion, we've paid attention to the letters. We've looked at all of them. A lot of our understanding through meetings with our city attorney and, and appropriate parties is just trying to understand the plan. And I think we all have a better plan, at least, understanding of that. So, you know, is, is Alderman Melissa here had, you know, talked about the reimbursable project costs as $480,000 for demolition, $450,000 for site work, $154,000 for private land purchase, which, no funds for the purchase of the land from the city. So we're not allowing the developer to use those funds, those funds for the city. And then $30,900 for initial commercial tenant improvement. So the, I, I think the issue stands in, in slight understanding of, of where the school district comes from, for the number of kids in the developer, 110 LLC. This is a, a relatively small TIF, and speaking of things, 1.1 million is still a lot of money. But it is, again, $480,000 for demolition and $450,000 for site work. And so I, I just want to, you know, make sure folks understand that we have vetted this process. We, we have listened to you, and we've also listened to, to the developer, the attorneys, and, and, you know, moving forward. Obviously, there'd be a vote this evening, but I just want to make sure, because I think sometimes there's some narratives out there that we don't want to listen to folks, or we don't understand. And trust me, this, this binder has been created. I've read every bit of it. I've made notes. I've had several meetings with other taxing jurisdictions. And I believe, you know, we'll have a decision to make, but, so, thank you.
Yeah, I think one of the misunderstandings, too, is this is 100% funded by property tax. There is a economic impact based on eats for economic activity on this property. So if they do have a restaurant that's performing really well, and commercial is performing really well, it pays off a lot sooner than 20 years. It's a million-dollar loan. So if they pay it off with sales tax quicker than the property tax pays it off, it's done. Goes back on the tax rolls. And the comments on assessment, Missouri's not Chicago or any other state. We have the Hancock Amendment here that helps protect us from property tax windfalls and different things that even happen in Kansas. So we won't have a giant bump in property tax because of things like this. So any other discussion by the board?
Mr. Mayor, may I? We sometimes would have Megan come and present the highlights of the plan. One of the things I do want to make sure, unless the board has other questions of her, is that as part of the TIF Commission meeting, and, and I think to a certain extent to Alderman Russell's question, this plan is a changed plan from the plan that was submitted by and recommended by the TIF Commission. Those changes include a reduction in the total amount that is capped at 1.1 million roughly, plus interest costs. It is capped at 20 years, and it includes, we did listen to the TIF Commission in their request to look at capture of utilities and utility. TIF Commission in their request to look at capture of utilities and utility, utility taxes as part of this. That number was so small that it really would have been more administratively costly to track, and as in exchange for that, we've included some uh reductions in development fees for the project to offset those costs. And those, that basically has the city um reducing the burden of some of the other taxing jurisdictions. Megan, are there any other highlights that I need to hit there? We just want to make sure that we've had these conversations on a number of occasions with the board, but we want to make sure the public is aware of that as well.
Yeah, and at our last meeting, for those of you who weren't here, our school board president did request that we try to get this below one point two, and we've done more than that. We've got it down to one point one. Yeah, we've listened and and addressed those concerns. Also, somebody also mentioned the developer buying this property. This property has been discussed as an economic impact area for well beyond when I started doing this. In my five years here, we have met with at least six developers looking at that property. And none of them could get it to pencil. Uh, there is a big risk being taken on developing that property, and that's the reason we have an economic incentive program for those types of risks. Yes, Mr. Russell.
Just something that, going back to what, uh, thank you, Mayor, that what Alderman Wilson uh mentioned about, and I I think that Alderman Hartman touched on as well, about the uh, the cost um for this project, which, like Cynthia said, we've gotten it down. And the mayor mentioned as well to uh below one point two million. But the question was about that, that about the eight hundred, roughly below nine hundred thousand dollars for demolition of the bill, of the current building, right, that we're helping, would it, uh, if we were, and if we were to say, okay, we're getting, then let's just pay for the demolition with the TIF and for the, that piece of it. Um, and and that, I heard that the, on listening to the the TIF Commission, the uh, the owner said that that if we were just to use that, the owner had mentioned that he would not be able to, the project would not be viable. So I guess my question is, if if we can, if if we were to say, um, okay, we, then we agree to pay to TIF the demolition and the piece that we talked about, then that would be sufficient to send it back to the TIF Commission. I'm not, I'm not saying that's what we need to do. I'm saying that that's an alternative. I'm not sure if that was explored on the TIF Commission since, and and how that would affect the uh the current owner or the the three builders, because I understood that they said if if we, if we were just to go TIF on the on demolition and uh clearing the land on the blighted property, that that would not be viable after that. That, I I guess the question is, is that
I don't have the chart in front of me, but I think that's pretty well where we're at, aren't we not?
The majority, I guess.
That's the majority of the one point one is exactly what we just talked about, the demolition.
Yeah, one other comment I've heard quite often is why doesn't the city build it, tear it down, or isn't the school build it, tear it down, and and we have a couple of folks here that are well aware with uh public construction projects, including Mr. Hedge Course in the back. I'm not sure what prevailing wage rate is right now on uh asbestos removal, but I'm sure we can look up what the rate on concrete and construction is. It's pretty expensive. Plus us buying it, it takes it completely out of the tax base, so that's not a very viable option either. Um, also on the sale of land that's been discussed on parking lots, um, right now, there's no taxes collected on those at all because the city owns those. If those do go to private hands, they start paying taxes on it. So that's additional tax revenue we're not getting today. Any other discussion or questions?
I have one comment I would. One of the things I've been hearing with from a lot of folks is is the children and and the money that is being lost. And uh, you made a statement that the school uh president set out a number for us to look, can you hit this number? And not only did we hit the number recommended by them, we came below it. So I think that needs to be heard again.
Thank you, Alderman Atkins. Anything else? So we have another agenda item on this as well, but for this one clerk, please call roll.
Alderman Hartman?
Aye.
Alderman Shipley?
Aye.
Alderman Atkins?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Yulidol?
Aye.
Alderman Russell?
No.
Five one.
Motion carries, Ms. Wagner, please read the bill.
An ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor to approve the one ten Smithville Tax Increment Financing Plan, establish the redevelopment area, designate the redevelopment area as blighted, making other findings designating one ten Smithville LLC as the developer of record and authorizing the city to enter into a TIF redevelopment agreement between between the city and one ten Smithville LLC.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is number eight, Alderman Yulidol.
Motion to approve bill number twenty-nine ninety-seven dash twenty-three, one ten Smithville, TIF redevelopment project, first reading.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Open back up for discussion. Alderman Russell?
Thank you, uh, Mayor Bulley. Um, it's just a this came to me and I, when you mentioned buying the property and people, you know, discussion, just uh just on something that had been discussed previously, is this an opportunity for a project that would be uh suitable not to to the city to discuss buying, but for eminent domain? And the city then uh just the uh taking over the 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 uh blighted property to rebuild it and uh and build something else there?
Eminent domain means we'd have to buy it based on the price that the eminent domain board sets, which would be probably far excess of what uh we'd have to spend, and then us doing the work. It'd be a prevailing wage project. That'd be very expensive. I mean, we're talking well over a million dollars. So as you mentioned earlier in our budget discussion, we don't have an extra million sitting around to do, to clear land. I mean, that's, what's the repayment on that of just the tax dollars of our loan? It'd take a lot longer than twenty-three years.
Okay, thank you, Mayor.
Any other discussion? Clerk, please call roll.
Alderman Yulidol?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Hartman?
Aye.
Alderman Shipley?
Aye.
Alderman Russell?
No.
Alderman Atkins?
Aye.
Five one.
Motion carries, Ms. Wagner, please read the bill.
An ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor to approve the redevelopment project for the one ten Smithville Tax Increment Financing Plan and activating the collection of tax increment financing revenues within the project.
Thank you. And just a reminder to the audience, we do have second reading. It is a month away. So it'll be on the eighteenth of July. Next item on the agenda is number nine. Alderman Yulidol?
Motion to approve bill number twenty-nine ninety-eight dash twenty-three, Fairview Crossing CID Funding Agreement, first reading.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please call roll.
Alderman Russell?
Aye.
Alderman Hartman?
Aye.
Alderman Shipley?
Aye.
Alderman Atkins?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Yulidol?
Aye.
Six zero.
Motion carries, Ms. Wagner, please read the bill.
An ordinance approving a funding agreement for the Fairview Crossing Community Improvement District.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is number ten, Alderman Yulidol.
Motion to approve resolution twelve thirty-three, accepting permanent sewer easement.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
May I have a second?
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor approving resolution twelve thirty-three, say aye.
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 All opposed, say no. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is number eleven, Alderman Yulidol.
Res- uh, motion to approve resolution one, two, three, four. Change order number one, Fourth Street and Fourth Terrace.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor approving resolution one, two, three, four, say aye.
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 All opposed, say no. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is number twelve. Alderman Yulidol?
Motion to approve resolution one, two, three, five. Author- authorizing expenditure for playground resurfacing.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All is in favor, approve, approve resolution one, two, three, five, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is public comment. First one is Scott Allen. Please state your name for the record and your address, and you have three minutes.
Scott Allen, three oh three Amesbury Drive. I'm here for really one purpose only. So I have to say no on the TIF. For the six and voted no on Christine Munch for a committee, a volunteer committee because of the voices. Back here, I see a lot of my fingers here. So I I sent all of emails, so don't look at me in shock. Didn't hear from one of you. You all know the way this person acts on social media. His social media group, Smithville Uncensored. How many people in Smithville refuse to go on that website because of his actions? He's accused me of being a Marxist. He's put it out there on social media, calling me several names. So the fact that the only way this bunch could prove her attack, being a victim by Amanda Mainz slash A.J. Vanderpool. We all know who it is. Doesn't matter. She asked for it. Be yourself on social media. Don't lie and come out and start liking your own posts to make it look like you got more people bantering one person. So if you vote no on Christine, he's got to get off the board. And we all know why he's on planning and zoning, so he can get more of the zones changed for more of the developers to come in here and build more shit. So Eric Craig drives around and frigging, uh, what is that?
Please watch your language, Mr. Allen.
Pardon?
Please watch your language.
Well, that's on text, too. Apparently, in these meetings, we can talk however the F we want. That was between you and
Your last warning, last warning.
So well, uh, this is the facts. We're not done. We're, we're looking into more and more political bias amongst this board. So just be warned.
Next item on the agenda is, next public comment is Roberta Loman. Ms. Loman, please state your name and address. Says you have before. You have three minutes.
Well, at my age, it takes me a while to gather information, but today I did look up based on letters that I received on a wall that wasn't mine in the city, ones that were going to repair a wall that wasn't mine. And now I'm looking at the International Property Maintenance Code because I was here last meeting to talk about a field that is terrible. I've had seven snakes, two copperheads. I've never had before. I have an exterminator at my house that I've never had before with rodents. My neighbors do. So I printed for you all three additional pictures, and I am asking Alderman Hartman, Rilature Hartman, to please pick your sign up if it's going to remain on the ground in the ditch. Because it's an eyesore for everybody. And I'm asking you all, if you're going to write citations based on the International Property Maintenance Code, then we need to look at that property because my safety and the safety of other neighbors are in, it, it's in jeopardy. So I'm asking the board to review this, and I would this time like an answer from somebody on what we're going to do with the field at Second Creek and Lowman Road. And I wish Mr. Hendrix was here tonight because I did file a complaint only to get a response today referencing George Lowman's hay, which had nothing to do with the complaint. And I called George, and it was quite humorous to both of us because it had nothing to do with it. So again, I would like to hear from my Alderman or the mayor, someone that can let me know what we're going to do before somebody's bit by a copperhead, mice overtake us, and insects, bugs, and everything else. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment, Linda? Any new business from the board?
Mayor, I I have something to report.
Yep.
Well, there's new business, and I just wanted to remind everybody that that we are having a fireworks show uh there at the dam on July first. And also, uh, we sure want to say and uh happy Independence Day.
Thank you. Yeah, and uh appreciate your help and all the volunteers' help this weekend for Lake Fest. And as we, we signed the agreement with the court earlier tonight, or the county earlier tonight on the fireworks. So it is July first, not July fourth, just to remind people. So thank you for that. And as you mentioned, we don't meet for a month, so happy Fourth of July. Any other new business? Our chain of motion adjourned.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor of adjourned, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Stand adjourned.